Stoltz, please.
I get it.
Seriously.
That was good, Joe.
No.
Okay, because you're also down then from that strange number.
Yes.
I can't remember what that was.
No, they hadn't, they hadn't downloaded. Yeah, I get it.
Do you ask?
I don't think so.
No.
I'll take the last question.
Yes, sir. I'll take the last one.
Jamie, should we turn our mic on?
Yes.
How close do you go? To the road?
Hell, God, with nothing but my hands there.
Well, your house is a little different.
Did you ask for one back home?
You should probably. You cut right. I just, you know, that's why I couldn't understand it. Because sometimes it gets nice and high there. Why don't someone just cut it and just move it over?
While it was trash, while it was trash and you threw it in the toilet.
Yeah, you need a charger. You need a charger.
It stays first.
Jamie, I turned it off today morning. I guess we're not supposed to be hearing ourselves on. I could both not supposed to be hearing ourselves. I'm sure. Now I get all the other garbage. Just stuff that flies out people's trucks, you know, like McDonald's. You see this, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's Carl Carter, right? I know who he is. Yep. In fact, he writes his name on it. This one's for you, Charlie. Happy Big Mac. You want me to notice that? Don't give a note. Don't give a note.
Hugs, my name.
Everything's all boy. I think that's a great question. How long did it take you to finish?
Well, I definitely saw they said. And I'm getting that up. I started today. Got some of this morning that went quite a bit. Something over. I'll fish. Come on. So I've been.
I'm not sorry.
Well, Mr. Bagley said today.
Because they're running my head. This brought.
No, no.
You look at that. We never had.
I wouldn't do that anyway. He just wanted, just wanted.
Yeah.
The police is there.
Keep on calling these one day. People show up?
Okay.
I was just about to have a can of two bottles maybe. So I'm going to give the eight. If you have four, I would like. Not Jones to be on time. All the rest of them, six or seven. All the cash is ready to fly there. All right, don't do that.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, we come right now to fight for a greater house. Thank you for your blessings. We come to actually bless up when our cannon, freedom blessed this by a cannon. Now only actually bless our board, all aboard, my listeners. Bless Brother Jones on a special way. Give us the knowledge and wisdom we stand to need of. The things we done in decent law, called the God we. Christ has been due for it.
On your hand.
Let the legion's prayer run.
Let the legion's to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion of approval of the chairman?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Ocean, second, we approve the agenda. Agenda and your questions. Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
The motion for approval of the minutes?
I move, Mr. Chairman, we approve the minutes as per the study.
Sorry.
Ocean, second, we approve the minutes. Your discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ocean, carry. Adams. I approve of Cane's. What's your name?
Don't move.
Second.
Open night, second, approve of Cane's and discussion. Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes.
I approve of the first four appropriations.
Don't move.
Ocean, lady, second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Open, ocean, lady, second, for approve of the first four of appropriations. In discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
The next thing I want to do, gentlemen, is all the United. All the guys will do. Thomas, the project, the request, share a case of celebration. Get out. Security fee from ten to twenty dollars. Discussion of that.
We have a couple of comments.
Just get a couple of comments.
Oh, I didn't say anything yet.
No one signed that.
No, I'm having a couple of comments. What was your pleasure?
Motion to approve the twenty dollar.
Motion made.
For the review.
Second.
Second. The discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ocean, carry. Going to the standard.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Elijah Kane, the request, the request garage, all of that.
Yes, this is going to be case twenty dash S U P two seventy. Elijah Kane is your applicant and landowner and his request leads to operators, commercial garage and auto repair shop. Uh, this is tax map one thirty-three, parcel two, lot twenty. It contains about four point zero seven acres at the intersection of Tower Hill and West James Anderson, which is route sixty. It's in James River Magisterial District. Um, Mr. Kane is with us tonight. This is the same case that was sent today, just last month.
Then the comments for that. It's been approved by the planning commission, that's right.
Uh, yes, sir. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval and it was passed unanimously at, um, our April twenty-seventh meeting. There was no citizen response to give comments, um, and we didn't hold a comment period. Uh, they did vote unanimously, as I mentioned, and all of our commission members were present with the exception of Chuck Maxie, who was unable to attend.
The discussion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Kane, who lives in my district, called me today and we talked about the conditions and also met with or spoke with Ms. Edmiston and, uh, they both, they're very comfortable with these conditions in terms of, uh, how they're laid out and, uh, what the planning commission has put forward. Just wanted to offer that.
Open, you have a public hearing on this?
Please use the.
No, no, no. Oh, yeah, sorry. What'd you say?
Oh, I just, I just added Supervisor Chambers that Mr. Kane, who lives in my district on the Troublesome Creek Road, though his shop is outside my district, he gave me a call and we talked about the conditions and I, and I spoke with Ms. Edmiston and they both are very comfortable with the direction of the, of the permit.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that.
Okay.
And I make a motion if it's appropriate to, um, approve this S U P.
We need to open it.
Yeah, first of all.
Oh, excuse me.
Any other comments? I don't know. Your question? We form now.
Yeah.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
So I offer a, a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the S U P, um, as recommended from staff regarding this case with Mr. Kane.
Second. Motion made the second that we approve this, uh, S U P. Call for the over, I guess.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ocean, carry, unanimous, uh, the next one for public hearing is, uh, for case Lisa Scruggs, thousand dollars. Quest for tax amendment to allow non-retail office space in A-one district. Especially used to operate non-retail office space as a home health staffing agency in A-one district. Uh, Ms. Edmiston, you have comments on that?
Um, yes, sir. This is case number twenty dash Z T A S U P two seven one and is what, it was introduced to you last month. Jimmy Spowes is our applicant, Lisa Scruggs is the landowner. Uh, and this property is located in the Marshall Magisterial District, tax map seventy, parcel seventy-four. It contains approximately ten point zero acres. The physical nine-on-one address is twenty-four fifty Randolph Creek Road, New Canaan, Virginia, two-three-one-two-three. This would be a two-part, uh, vote tonight. One is to add a zoning tax amendment for the purpose of operating a non-retail office space, which will encompass a home health staffing agency. And then Ms. Vowles is applying for an S U P for that purpose. Ms. Vowles is present with us, um, on this Zoom conference call and is ready to answer any questions that you may have. Um, at the last planning commission, uh, public hearing that was held, there was no citizen response, um, for comments. And at this time, the planning commission voted unanimously in favor of case number twenty Z T A S U P two seven one and sends you with a recommendation for approval of this request. Once again, all members were present with the exception of Chuck Maxie.
And, and the comments, public comments?
No comments at all.
Public comments on that? Uh, anybody having a, you, both members having a comment to say? I guess we call for a vote then. Uh, a motion is about.
I make a motion that we change the tax, tax amendment. A motion for non-retail office space.
I'll second that.
Motion made the second. Uh, any comments with the board? Call for the vote. Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ocean, carry, unanimous.
But name of that law, Martin, you passed the S U P.
I'll second that.
Second of all, yes.
Okay. Motion made the second for, for the S U P. Any comments on that? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ocean, unanimous. Uh, Ms. Edmiston, I'll take you up again, so. So.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Tonight I bring to you an introduction of case twenty S U P two seven two. The landowner and applicant is Amos Stoltzvis. The property is located at seventeen forty-four Bell Ranch Road, Dillon, Virginia, two-three-nine-three-six. It is tax map one twenty-eight, parcel twelve. This parcel contains approximately one hundred and forty-four acres and it is located in the Curtisville Magisterial District. It is currently zoned A-one. Um, the request is to obtain a special use permit to operate a private school, a one-room schoolhouse. The property is on Bell Ranch Road, six-six-seven in the Curtisville Magisterial District and contains one hundred and forty-four acres. The property is zoned A-one. The zoning ordinance does not permit a private school as a permitted use. However, within the A-one agricultural district, private schools may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with this ordinance and the code of Virginia. The planning commission may recommend that the board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. Mr. Stoltzvis has indicated and has written narrative for our special use permit application that this is a one-room Amish parochial school. This private school would house one teacher and maximum of thirty-five students. Mr. Stoltzvis states that the school would begin session on the last week of August and end session by the third week of May the following year. School-aged children would range from five years, ten months to thirteen years of age. Mr. Stoltzvis has also included the dimensions of the schoolhouse to be thirty by forty-two and include an eight-by-twenty porch with a three-quarter acre fenced playground. I have included thirteen conditions. Our public hearing, um, was held on May twenty-sixth for case twenty S U P two seven two. There was one comment received in support of case twenty S U P two seven two and all planning commission members were present except commission member Cruz. The planning commission sends this to you with a recommendation of approval.
Now y'all heard what, uh, Ms. Edmiston, uh, said? We got.
Yes. I make a motion that we move it to a public hearing.
I second that, Mr. Chairman. What?
I'm just reading, I mean. Ms. Edmiston?
Ma'am?
We had a, uh, a few years ago, another Amish school that was opened up. Were all of these, were these conditions the same as the previous one?
These are actually the same conditions that were set forth in, um, Mr. Gideon's, uh, violas.
Did, did he move?
Maybe it was ruled, I apologize. Uh, yes, two years ago, when that S U P was approved for the Amish one-room schoolhouse, these are the exact same conditions. Yes, sir.
I have a motion that we, uh, have a public hearing there.
Thirteen. I'll second that.
Motion made the second, have it on July. What's your date?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Public hearing. All right. All right, Ms. Edmiston? Yeah.
Turn to your table.
Yes, turn to.
All right. Uh, here's others.
Ryan?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ocean, carry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have an introduction of case twenty dash S U P two seven three. Macy Walsh is our landowner. The applicant is Black Bear Solar LLC. Their request is to obtain a special use permit for a solar generating facility for the purpose of constructing and operating a solar energy facility for up to one point six megawatts in capacity. All energy will be sold to Dominion Virginia Power. This is tax map one fourteen, parcel eight, lot three, containing approximately one hundred and nine acres located at three-zero-zero-three Bell Ranch Road, Dillon, Virginia, two-three-nine-three-six. It is in an agricultural A-one district. The zoning ordinance does not permit a public utility generating plant as a permitted use. However, within the A-one agricultural district, public utility generating plants, public utility booster or relay stations, transformer substations, meters and other facilities, including railroads and facilities and water and sewage facilities, may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with this ordinance and the code of Virginia. The planning commission may recommend that the board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. Black Bear Solar LLC explains this project within the project narrative. This proposed solar generating facility will encompass act approximately ten acres of pasture land and three additional acres, uh, for a total of thirteen acres within the one hundred and nine acre parcel. The three acres is for, um, the additional fencing that's required and that is one of the updated conditions. Our planning commission held a public hearing for this case on May twenty-sixth. There were two comments received and votes were in opposition to this case. All planning commission members were in attendance except commission member Cruz. The planning commission sends this to you with a recommendation of approval. And asks that, as you wish, to schedule a public hearing for July thirteen, twenty twenty.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I would really like us to have staff look into the ramifications of this. I know we, we have, um, some solar facilities in the county now and because of, uh, the code of Virginia and its, um, regulations, we've seen some revenue loss in terms of what the general assembly has done with the eighty-twenty and some other things that the state legislature has approved as of July one. I just want us to make sure that we're, that we're going into this knowing full well if we are going to lose any real estate tax revenue the way we assess it now. Um, and what would maybe have losses past that has come about from legislation. And, um, I would hope that we can do that before we, uh, go into this. I mean, obviously we need to have a hearing, but I'm telling, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of us continuing to lose real estate revenue with the subsidies that the state makes us give them over a period of time. Did the planning commission talk about this?
The planning commission, we had an introduction at a public hearing. Also said with our county attorney, um, he and I will be more than happy to review this again and that's the wish of the board. There are some changes, as he's indicated, um, that will happen after July first.
I'm just concerned about us continuing to lose revenue on real estate.
What is?
Especially with machinery and tools as well. Maybe I should say that.
This will impact, uh, thirteen acres.
Right, but I, I completely understand that.
What will the tax rate, how, how will that affect the tax revenue? The parcels? The new, the new laws coming effect July?
And that's a great question, right?
So, I think, Mr. Chairman, Brian's, uh, horse and buzzwords.
Mr. Matthews, if you would, ask that.
How is moving Ju- from July one moving forward with the new conditions that the, uh, joint assembly is putting in effect? How's that going to affect the, the land values or the tax rate on this parcel later?
There are all sets involved. There are some proposed language in the bills and it's going to affect on July one. Supposedly for some of the, for sure, Mr. County. Same time in some languages, we've got to clarify the fact that it has on funding the schools. It's a little complicated to give you a hill of money on right here. If you'd like to receive that type of information, I'm sure, uh, Edmiston can be able to provide that to you when you have a public hearing, so you can have that in the accuracy.
Does the landlord of this is going to be in effect July one? Do they understand the ramifications of the new tax laws? They don't?
We don't represent the landlord. That's up to them. They propose their legs, that's those, those, that's up to them. That's a negotiation that they should be involved in.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Right, that's exactly what I was hoping that we could have before July one. And I think that would give us information for going forward if we have any other solar facilities, big or small, that want to come into the county. I'm not saying pull the plug, ma'am. I'm just asking for information as well.
So you just want to get the information before we get to the public hearing?
I would like that because of the potential of, of us losing, if, if, whether it's machinery and tools or a real estate tax on this or any other solar facility that wants to come into the county.
With that report, you should allocate, if you really want to get it, you should allocate a little amount. We get that before, well. Because you can't play in acres and so on, part of the simple thing.
That makes it a little harder on this hearing, don't they? I think somebody on the, uh, for our Zoom wants to make a comment, is that Drew Price?
And Brendan, Adam, and Adam are.
Yeah, Adam and Brendan are both.
We're Black Bear Solar.
Right.
Yeah, can I, um, can I make a com- a comment about the, um, tax, the impact on tax revenue for this project and, uh, more broadly, starting July one? Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Can I, it's so hard when you can't see people, um, but thank you all for bearing with me. So, uh, for a context, um, Exagon Energy was part of the ongoing negotiation, uh, representing the four districts. They're, uh, negotiating the new tax, uh, bill and then working. Very, um, familiar with and in the lead, uh, with the, the improving tax structure and the new tax structure starting July one. Um, I think we can probably, before I launch the message, we can help share a memo that, um, are the, the main attorney in the business that helped get that bill passed across the line, have it put together, to help share with, um, counties and county administrators, board supervisors, county attorneys, et cetera, um, to make sure that you understand what, uh, what, what the old situation was and what, what's changing. Um, for, um, for this project, it, um, it's so small that it falls under that threshold for the, um, for the, um, tax, tax rate, so, um, it, it would sort of be out of that, that conversation. Again, the, uh, project should have a increased, uh, effect on the real property tax. So across Virginia, we've been seeing that, um, property that gets included as part of the solar facility is reappraised at a higher, um, value. So we, we're seeing a number of, um, you know, ten thousand dollars per acre for, for that land, um, used across, across the, the Commonwealth. Um, we would anticipate that, uh, while we don't fall, we're not big enough to fall under the machine tools or, or into the, the new revenue share that could, um, again, share a memo about for larger projects. Um, we would anticipate an increase for a portion of property that we owe you.
I wish to make a little discussion. I'll be happy to help in any way again, but it is complicated. I can maybe with the evidence in that he's talking about the attorney to do that discussion with some other projects. Uh, this project is not a good one to pass. I haven't been able to make the people work. Well, suppose, oh, we all have a public hearing order, though.
I make a motion that we have a public hearing on July thirteenth with the information that. No, just until next one.
Second. Are the motion made the second?
Second.
Yes. He's second.
Second. Our motion made the second that we have a public hearing on July thirteenth. The other discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews? Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ocean, carry. I mean, next all of the, the city with the planning commission on Monday, July twenty. Seven P M. When you're on the first session. In the comprehensive plan update. Yeah, I want you to do that. Y'all want me? I'm going to open up then.
I move that we set that meeting, Mr. Chairman, as recommended.
A motion made, we, we make the planning commission on July the twenty.
Sorry.
So, uh, all of this, um, motion made the second, in discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes.
I would say that by our, our July meeting, we will know how things are going and things so bad, we, we may have to.
Tentatively set it up and if things, if conditions worsen, then we just cancel the meeting. There's, there's plenty of time, you know, to give the planning commission that. There's, there's plenty of time, you know, to give the planning commission ample notice.
Okay, gentlemen. All right, good.
Thank you.
Off the vote. Okay, go. Motion up, for a public hearing. Presentation, Dr. Hicks. Should attend the public conference.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, and welcome back to H. Hopefully, you all are doing well, for, I mean, Board of Supervising Chair and Board members. This is an update about fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget based on the General Assembly amended budget on April twenty-ninth as well as your approved budget on April twentieth. The state is reducing their funds by a total of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. State has removed the compensation supplement, reducing basic aid, act rates, and Virginia preschool initiatives. Also, we are requesting to amend our previously, previously presented budget in county appropriations, a total reduction of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, thirty-one dollars. It's made up of the additional funds that the school board originally requested of eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and a one percent reduction, new approved of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. And personnel expenditures, we are eliminating the proposed two percent salary increase for contracted employees, reducing one proposed new school counselor and one proposed new middle school English teacher. We are also taking eight percent health insurance premium reduction on the employee of premium. In other expenditures, we are removing the proposed five percent K B M. grant and custodial contract increase as well as reducing the group of instruction consumable bond.
I, I heard what she said. They did. Discussion on that as well. There's one deal, like they had a lot of reductions updates, I understand something.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, ask Dr. Hicks one quick question. With the reduction of thirty-two thousand, eight ninety-five for the Virginia preschool initiative, what does that mean in terms of what was planned in terms of what's going to have to be brought back programmatically?
We are actually not making any changes to the number of students there or to the staff there. That increase that the governor and the General Assembly had proposed was the increase in per pupil amount. And that amount that would decrease, but it wouldn't affect the number of flights or our personnel at all.
And, and, and too, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Hicks, that eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one is carryover from fiscal year nineteen, right? In the bottom line?
No, the eighty, no, the eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars was the amount that we had asked for in addition to what you all normally have given us.
What did she say? Excuse me, I didn't, I was.
You wanted to repeat what she said?
Yes, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, he was asking about the eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. I was thinking about her, it's a mouth, probably, you want to know if that had anything to do with the carryover funds? It does not. That eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars was what we had asked in addition to what you all normally gave us for our budget in order to make budget that we had originally submitted and asked for, requested when we backed, backed in March. But we removed that amount from our budget since we did not receive that, along with the seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and two, um, ten dollars that were reduced from our original budget, that one percent.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks.
You are.
Approve the amended budget?
So, amended budget. Can we, a motion to approve the amendment, I make a motion to approve the amended budget, Mr. Chairman? A motion made, we approved the amendment, still on, uh, you have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I got one more quick question. I apologize, so, if, if, Dr. Hicks, in terms of the reductions in staff, it's, there are no reductions in staff, but y'all are going to eliminate the addition of the one new school counselor and the one new middle school English teacher?
Yeah, those were two proposals that we had put in place for the M E S O Q.
Right.
And need our S O Q. requirement, so we are removing those because we did not have the funds to do those additional additions. You are.
A motion been made, is that a second to a motion of? Don't have a second, so I'm guessing about that, break that up. You mean, take, you're not going to approve?
I'll second the vote, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna tell, a motion made in the second. Any discussion? Off the vote then.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes. Motion made. The next item on the agenda is, uh, Kobe Davis and rest of the services management, manager. I'll say all that. Open without any?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, this is Paul.
Uh, so the first item that I'm in your presence for this evening is an update on COVID nineteen. Prior to this meeting, I did check our numbers on the various websites, the Health Department and D O C website. I think we can all agree that there's some discrepancy on the numbers. But as of a couple of hour ago, the Health Department had our overall case count at four hundred and eighty-one, with twenty hospitalized and three dead. Dylan, D O C, on their website, had ninety-three offenders on site and two staff. And Buckingham, D O C, had forty-four offenders on site with nine staff. Not the staff, a very small percentage of them are county residents. And Ms. Carter and I have been able to derive that through our weekly conference calls with the wardens from both of the facilities within Buckingham. They, they both have some promising numbers as well regarding their recovery. To continue on that, you all are aware we did extend our Phase One. Here at our county facilities, specifically pertaining to our brick and mortar facilities, where we felt our staff could be at risk of exposure if we were to begin to let the public in this building. We felt that our staff becoming exposed, leading to a majority of us needing to quarantine, would ultimately lead to less services being provided to the public than, you know, the alternative of staying close to the public, where we are still able to provide the services just in various alternative methods. So, at this point, if the trends get better and stay better, we'll go into Phase Two for the county next Monday, which would allow the public to come into the building with some screening measures in place. Which brings me to my next point, I think Ms. Carter sent you all by email a job posting. We would like to hire a temporary individual tasked solely with screening guests to our facility. We don't feel that anybody on our current staff can fit that safely into their current work duties. And the funding for this position would be covered under the CARE Act. Other than that, that's all I've got on COVID nineteen specifically, unless any of you all have a question.
I have one question.
So, has there been an uptick in counts going?
Through unofficial sources, yes. Unfortunately, the official sources, we feel, are somewhat behind in reporting those. But through unofficial sources, very reliable unofficial sources, we do believe there's been an uptick in the county. And some of those upticks are alarming because, you know, they are gathering places for numbers of people in the community and things like that. So, taking all that into account, is the biggest reason we decided to extend our Phase One. Instead of we could make sure we have all those proper screening tools in place. When we can open it back up to the public here.
It almost seems like we're getting hit again.
I think, again, it's just, I think Buckingham is just getting hit, period. I think we are just a little bit behind a majority of the state. And we're just, we're really, we're kind of on the initial part of our uptick when the rest of the state finally crested. So, you know, we're still up climbing and maybe cresting very soon. And the, the majority of the state is already over that crest. So, just because of the demographics of this county, we are behind in the progression of COVID nineteen, which ultimately makes it look like we're behind in the recovery from COVID nineteen. We can't really help how this disease progresses to this area. So, I think that, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I do want the general public to understand that. We're not doing this for our amusement, we're doing this for the safety of all, so.
Thank you. Stayed as.
Sure.
That was, uh, complicated on the, renew the contract. D R T, for twenty-two seven, rescue squad could, uh, get more?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, so I guess, somewhat live when we were done talking about COVID nineteen, but you all remember a couple of months ago, in early April, you gave us the authority to put the emergent contract crew on out of Glimmore through our contract partner, which is Dr. Spots Team or D R T. That contract is set to terminate at the end of this month. It is the recommendation of the Rescue Squad Committee that due to the availability of COVID nineteen CARES funding, we extend that contract through December to, you know, try to keep as many resources available to the city as possible during this time of uncertainty.
Our recommendation is to renew the contract with D R T.
I make a motion that we renew the contract with D R T through December.
I'd second that, Mr. Chairman.
A motion made in the second, we renew the contract with D R T through December. Any discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
That's what the Glimmore Rescue Squad, that's the area.
I have one other thing to add to, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that the Rescue Squad Committee be given the latitude to develop a transition plan for Buckingham County Rescue Squad to assume the provision of emergency services that are currently provided by Buckingham County Rescue Squad, if that should become necessary. And to make a, make a recommendation as to the funding of the assumption of services should the county assume the provision of such emergency services. And that the emergency services manager, Kobe Davis, make an application on behalf of the county for an EMS services operation license.
Uh, not second in motion.
A motion made in the second, that, I have no further motion again, uh, Mr. Matthews, uh, ready to motion that? Any discussion?
I attended a meeting with Kobe last week, Kobe.
Yes.
And Mr. Flutten did say that he would like to step down in December. They took a vote, and it was unanimous of their vote that they wanted the county to look at, assume the financial aspect of it.
That's, that's kind of what I'm asking for our subcommittee to kind of look at that and proceed. And just give permission for you to start looking to do it.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think it's important to note that the volunteer group from the Rescue Squad has been involved in this process. And we all mutually view this as a partnership that ultimately achieves our top priority, which is the public safety of this county, so that we don't make prideful decisions, we make necessary decisions that are sometimes hard, but like I said, necessary. But they are very much team players in this, and have been want to facilitate a smooth transition so that we can continue to provide an optimal service for the county.
A motion made in the second, that, any other discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes. Current. Solid Waste, the Reclamation, Solid Waste Management.
Thank you.
Yes, Chairman, I'm sorry to pass this out to you such a late notice, but Solid Waste Committee was tasked with the job of trying to get a solid waste order, a new order, to say in fact, that will address all the issues that someone you had about, you know, who gets into the solid waste site, whether, how to handle the farm use tax issue, how to handle residents that own property in the county but don't live here, residents and so forth. So, we come with this document, we think it covers everything that you guys had questions on. Once again, I'm sorry we're giving you such a last minute, but we kind of working this all weekend with myself, Ms. Carter, and E M. on getting this to you guys for tonight's meeting. So, what we'd like you to do is take this, study it, and have a public hearing next month so we can adopt this, or have any change you guys want to make to it for the public. So, once again, sorry for giving you late, but hopefully you can take this home and look at it for next month and have a public hearing and get this passed.
So you want us to set a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we set a public hearing on the Solid Waste Management Order.
I'll second that.
A motion made in the second, we have a, uh, a public hearing on, um, July the twenty, uh, July the thirteenth. Any other discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Motion made, you're down, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to give me and Becky, E M. a call when you try to answer the meeting.
Okay.
Can I have a question?
Okay.
Not, not for you, um, so. Did we not have any public comments?
No.
Goodbye.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, consider alternations to seek, have some approval to anyone that's ready for solid waste permits.
Uh, yes, sir, I will address that, Mr. Chairman. And as, as you know, the, the law changed in July where the county can't impose a solid waste fee if they care to. And I think some of the discussions of the Solid Waste Committee and also some of the discussions with you all have been, uh, to possibly move away from the county decal as a, a way to get into the waste sites, get a charge of fee and, and have a permit. Now, I'm sure you all have made clear, just seeking general, uh, General Assembly authority to do that would not, I'm sorry, the code did not change on that, the code changed on, uh, Mill's time. But to seek General Assembly authority to impose a solid waste fee, then that would be on seeking authority, that's not meaning that you all tonight would vote that you're going to do that, because there's some other avenues we could look at with that, of maybe lowering county decal price and the difference beyond the fee, but to try to move away from that county decal being the access. So, that, that's what's behind mostly, uh, this request. So I'd like for you all to give us authority to pursue through the General Assembly this authority.
So. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, we have an authority to seek approval from the General Assembly. Any questions, any comments? Off the vote.
Bryant.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yeah.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Motion, Chair, you're down. Recycling committee request.
You or me, doesn't matter.
Well, you can kind of see before you, we got a little report together. We've been talking to one person that has been in recycling business for many, many years and got a lot of input from them. And I'm getting a lot of input from citizens in my district concerning recyclables, mainly plastic, paper, cardboard and aluminum. To mention the four main categories. And at this time, we're asking as from the recycling committee, we've tasked Mr. Hill to start looking at a couple of compactors that we would be able to use to compact the paper, the cardboard, the plastics and the aluminum. We'd use both of those compactors at the Dillon site. And Mr. Bryan and Mr. Bryant, who are on the Solid Waste Committee, Mr. Bryant's on the recyclable committee with me to kind of look at the configuration of the Dillon site to be able to put these two pieces of equipment there. And then we would house the excess of those items up at the six hundred site, which means we need a couple of pieces of equipment to be able to handle some of this stuff. But in the long run, if we get this stuff and it's approved and we're moving on down the road, we're meeting several different needs. We're meeting the needs of the citizens who want to have things recycled. And we're also easing the pain of solid waste a little bit. And the pain, I mean, by the monetary factor that we have to pay on a monthly basis to have our trash haul the way. And some of this stuff, you know, we're not in the money making business, but this, this money would be going to help pay for some of this equipment and also some of the solid waste expenses that we have in the county. So you can see before you, it's two compactors. We need a recycling trailer. Let's see, a fifty-three foot trailer to haul the recyclables. And that, that, as a being, we're going to buy a tractor trailer. We're just buying the trailer to be able to move it from here to Lynchburg or wherever we decide that we can get the best price for this material. We're going to need a skid steer to handle these things, these things, because they're not light. We probably need a couple of carports to be able to put these balers under or we will build a shed roof of some sort to house, to, to, to keep this stuff out of the weather. We want to take care of it if we do get it. And we've tasked Mr. Hill to, to accomplish these things since he's the solid waste manager for the county. And we've had several discussions, this is, this, this didn't happen yesterday. We've had several meetings in the last month and a half, two months. Several meetings with outside vendors or people that are in this business. So this is something that's cropped up today just by a whim. So we're trying to be compassionate to, to the thoughts and the needs of the citizens of Buckingham County. And we want to do it in an approval manner to save the county money. So that's kind of where I'm at, trying to add anything to that.
You know, we, we talked about glass. It's not, nobody wants glass, nobody. So glass is throwaway. You know, there's, there's no sense in trying to say, yeah, we're going to recycle it. We can't recycle it.
And that's not a state thing, that's not a global thing.
No, that's, that's global, yeah, that's global. Nobody wants glass. But like, like Mr. Matthews says, you know, it's, it's a, I've heard it now for about five, six years that we, that we need to recycle. We've came up with several suggestions. We would do the baling at Dillon, but we would still take the stuff that, you know, the other sites. It would just mean that we would have to transport them to Dillon to be able to make the bales. And we would store them at six hundred in the trailer. And the reason we store them, especially cardboard, if you get cardboard wet, then it diminishes the price that you'll get for the cardboard. So if we're going to bail it, we'll keep it dry and we'll get the good, good price for it, so.
Do you have any idea what you get for a bail? Yeah.
Kids want to market.
Yeah, it's, it's all market value. All market value. Ms. Evanston, did you find out anything on, come on?
I sent a message to an individual there, but they did not have any definitive information. But some of it is actually in the press release.
Yes.
From EDP and the Farm O'Harold explaining the process that that new economic announcement, the company.
Okay.
The show building there, a couple of them will undertake.
To summarize, Cumberland just opened a new business. If you read it in the paper, it's dealing with plastics. It pretty much takes, takes whatever is required out of the plastics.
With something.
Yeah, just, it extracts it somehow. And, and that would be one of the options that we would look at for like our plastic. You know, and that's just one county over instead of going all the way to Lynchburg or wherever for it. They're right next door, so that would save transportation costs as well, so.
Well, you all, the committee and Mr. Hill is all still working on it, right?
Pretty much, we have, we have the figures, I think it lends down that he knows the compactors. You know, we talked about trying to get a couple of used compactors. It's just as easy to buy new compactors, they're under warranty and they're not that much more expensive. I, I'd like to go ahead and, I guess he's done his homework, Ms. Carter.
Yeah, and, and we don't have it all together and that's why we want a direction from you all. If you all want us to receive.
Oh, absolutely.
Costs for all these things, so we can bring something back.
I can, I can make that in form of a motion to proceed, give the authority to the recycling committee to proceed acquiring the bids or the prices on this.
I'll second that. Ms. Carter, did you want to add, um, the vehicle, roll-off vehicle?
Yeah, when, um.
And the roll-offs?
The committee also discussed the possibility of using a roll-off container to save money by hauling our own recyclables. But another way that you could save money with that too, with a roll-off truck and our own roll-off containers, we're charged right at three hundred dollars every time waste management comes and picks that up, picks one of those containers up. And that doesn't count the, the weight, the tonnage that we have to dispose of. So that actually probably would call on the Solid Waste Committee. So we discussed, asking the Solid Waste to look into the cost of that and the cost saving, if you could see, to do that.
Absolutely, I think that's a good idea.
You are adding to your motion. If we add that, looking at the price on, on the roll-off vehicle.
And the container.
And container.
Container, that's fine.
And this will be a double in situation towards we'll be able to use for our roll-offs. It's going to save money plus for the recyclables.
Right, right.
That's really going to be a good thing.
You all heard your motion, motion made in second. You have authority to continue with this recycling committee and come back with some prices, some, that's one little cost. Any discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Motion, Chair, you're down. What's the call? Yeah, thank you.
It's a good picture, I think.
It does.
Center of the, of the time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, before the meeting, I passed out a bar chart for you guys to look at tonight to kind of give you an update on how we're staying with the revenue collection during this pandemic. I was kind of scared to print this report first because I was expecting a big sticker shock on, you know, how we're bringing in funds right now. And when you know the very first column, real estate, is showing we're down through May, this is all through May thirty-first, to bring down about a million six with real estate collections compared to last year. And so today, got the treasurers office and tried to figure out how it was such a big gap between last year and this year. And because of the reduced hours and staff, and they have tons of mail they have not processed yet. And a lot of that mail is mail from the, the mortgage companies, escrow accounts. So when they send, those companies send those escrow amounts in, they send them on like sheets of paper. Those are pretty large amounts that haven't been vetted, rated in yet. So that explains why that number is so large and the discrepancy between this year and last year. And she has a stack of it, and they're still trying to get caught up with that.
What is it, what's their timeframe of working that mail?
They're, they're, they're fully staffed now. They're working on it each day trying to get caught up, so they're, they're continuing to work.
I mean, do they have to leave the set for three days or two days?
We have a, a traction out front that tries to.
Oh, oh, that machine?
Uh huh, yes, sir.
Oh, ozone, ozone.
They're trying to speed up that process, yes, sir. The next thing is the public service, we're down about ninety-seven thousand on that. But then you look at personal property, we actually are ahead of where we were last year at this time. So people may be paying their taxes a little later, but they're paying them, so we're blessed with that. Mobile home taxes is pretty close, only eleven hundred dollar difference. Machinery tools, once again, that's an increase compared to last year versus capital's a small increase. Penalty interest is down a little bit, but once again, this report is through May thirty-first, so we're hoping by the time of June, it's in, that number will catch up as well. County stickers, not, it's certain the numbers is not that much of a difference. Twenty-five hundred dollars decrease compared to this time last year. And we hope, once again, once, you know, people starting to get in solid waste sites, they are starting to pay for those stickers.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, like you said, that's pretty close to what we had last year, twenty-five hundred, thirty dollars difference. Does it ever tell you, how, how close are we to compliance as far, I mean, the number of vehicles that are registered in the county, does it tell you that?
I can't tell you that, but I can tell you, I can get you a number for the number of stickers sold. But whether those stickers are put on, like if you have five vehicles on, if you're putting them on right and right, and the stickers are sold, I can get you a report of that.
I'm just curious, I mean, that, that number's so close to, that almost means that.
I think actually considering that, our office hasn't been pushed to the public. So many people have had a hard time getting their, their tax amounts that they need to pay. So we're, I'm pleased with that right now.
Yeah, thank you.
And then Carl, we're pleased to tell.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, just real quick, so, so you're thinking that once the treasurer's office and as they process that mail and the escrow accounts and all that's coming, then you think it's going to have a pretty big dent in that one point six million dollar?
Yes, sir, I think it will.
You think so?
Yes, sir.
Well, I sure hope so, because if not, then somebody's finance company is cheating them. So it's just a matter of process.
On, on the sales tax collected, oh, what does that, what does that actually reflect? That's, does that count wide for all sales tax?
Local sales tax for Buckingham County, doesn't count the school, they get a separate part of their sales tax. This is just.
How much was that, do you know what that was?
For the schools?
Yes.
I don't know.
We know that they're down.
Yeah, they, they give reports on those down by, I don't know, it's time by any way. I can pull that up before you go.
You know, I mean, I'm just looking at percentage wise, we're down ninety-seven thousand dollars in cooking, in reference to there, I mean, is that, is it kind of tick for tax on that?
They get, they get a larger percentage of the pot than local though.
Okay.
So they've been losing, we talk around fifty thousand dollars a month in sales tax, but school money, school sales tax. Ours is a much smaller percentage. So that even makes that ninety-seven thousand kind of big though. And that's just based on the sales taxes being moved in our county. A lot of that could be in restaurants, too.
Yep. What I thought I was going to say with the.
All the grocery stores have a, have a cutback, I mean, there.
What? Just, yeah, just the restaurants. Carefree, you didn't come back. Get a number, get up like.
So this is just an informational item from you guys and I think, once again, once we play catch-up with the real estate, I think we're a lot better than we thought we'd be at this time. So hopefully the month of June will continue that trend.
And as Carl said, we were kind of afraid to see this, but I, I think considering all that's fallen on, that people didn't think about it by the time they were asked.
Based on that, I guess that leads into the next thing.
That leads into, yes, sir. The credit card, debit card fees. It was a board decision to absorb those, uh, convenience costs at two point five percent for using their credit card and debit card to do transactions against the county. I just want some gas from you guys, do you want to pass that back on to the consumer when we open up to the public? Or when do you want to start that back to where it used to be when the consumer paid it?
You said, Cody, that, that you don't recommend coming out of phase one until at least next week?
One day is the plan. Unless a trend, a forward trend presents itself.
I'd, I'd like to at least extend it to the end of June. You know, and that, that gives people the chance, I mean, by then we should be in phase three, hopefully in the state of Virginia. We will definitely be in at least phase two here in the county. And the state should be in phase three. If we could do that and, you know, maybe put it on the, on our webpage that effective thirty June, it's, it's closed, you know, then, then.
Starting July one.
Yeah, starting July one, you're going to absorb the fee. We're giving you the right, right now to pay it if we're absorbing the fee. But if you wait till July one, the fee is on you.
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's one of the perks, that's, that's my motion. Is, is to extend it till at least thirty June.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion made in second, we, we're going to, uh, call fees until last day of June. Any discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers.
Yes.
Motion, Chair, you're down.
Thank you.
The city's additional appointments to the anti-toss force.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I want to make sure I read all the names. I know that Supervisor Chambers recommended from his district, David Ogden to serve on the anti-toss task force along with the other appointments we made last month. And I talked to Supervisor Jones today and he's talked to Louis Bryan, who owns and operates Brown Waste Management. I think he bring a good voice to this committee as well. And did, did you have someone contact you, Mr.? Okay, yeah, so that's Kenda Hahnman.
Put her, put her name down.
Sir.
Put her name down.
Okay, so those are the three, Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if anyone else had any. And we can always revisit this if you all have more. And that would be, so my motion, if no one else has any names.
I got it.
Yes, yes, sir.
Eddie Slagel has offered to represent District Three.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so my motion will be that we appoint David Ogden, Louis Bryan, Kenda Hahnman and Eddie Slagel from their respective districts to serve on the anti-toss task force.
Motion made, we want to introduce the anti-toss, anti-toss force. Motion made in second, is, is discussion? Off the vote.
Bryant.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Motion, Chair.
And it's our hope, uh, Mr. Chairman, that we can hopefully have a fall cleanup. We've, we've, we've been sort of talking about that a little bit. I've been talking with Supervisor Matthews about that as well. So that's something that we're looking forward to before cold weather hits with this spring, obviously. And so that's what we're looking at in terms of the getting our roadways cleaned up, working on the heat out of that.
Right. A little conversation I have with Supervisor. He's been charging us anti-toss task force.
Yeah.
Moving forward, you know, we've had a lot of recycling information tonight and different things. You know, we've had a lot of recycling information tonight and different things. I challenge you to really get with some of these other people that have been very prominent in our anti-tasque force since past, like, county, county corporation.
Absolutely.
And, of course, Yoda Bill and Miss Hahneman, she's probably very instrumental in helping that locale and kind of help with recycling and letting them know what we're trying to move forward with as a county here at, at our major dump site, which is...
I think that's a good idea.
Dylan, so.
Absolutely.
Can they get on board with us?
Well, it's working hand in hand, I think, with, with those committees in terms of recycling and cleaning up the roads, so.
And then you develop some days throughout the year, not just one day a year that will be, so, as far as anti-flu, that, uh...
Right.
The best time will be spring, summer, fall.
Of course.
Your winter months will not be a good time.
And then my thought is that in tandem with recycling, Supervisor Matthews, that we have these volunteers who are willing and able, they could help out with some recycling, some sort of a day or something where you bring something to the Dylan site, whatever site it is.
Right, right.
So...
Well, you can recycle, we're still going to recycle at all sites, and you can get a different site every month if you want to do it that way.
We're just bailing the Dylan.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, thank you all. And the thing is, consider appropriations of the victim's witness program. Grant denied offense in the thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Do we have to award that money, Carl, to...
We've probably been awarded, we need to appropriate.
We just got approved.
Because we just have to appropriate it to the proper...
We got, yeah, we got an official lot of things you've been approved for.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my, my, this is a grant that comes from the state. It costs the county no, no deposit money. It is administered by the county and I checked with Mr. Carter, he advises it's not a bunch of a burden. I will say from the Office of Common Attorney, it is of great assistance coordinating, talking with victims and getting their perspective and keeping them up to date. So first, I want to express to you your, the appreciation for you continuing to fund and be a part of this grant that doesn't cost you any money, and also to recognize the good work being done by the current victim witness coordinator named Jordan.
I make a motion that we appropriate the money into the proper line item in the budget.
Second. Motion made, second, in discussion. Call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried. All matters of vote considered, uh...
Um, one thing before you move on, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Carter, do you have a, an item in here? Is that under the appropriations for COVID care? To, to separate the funding, half funding, fifty percent?
That's not in COVID. That's, that's the next item?
And what, but that's for COVID care funding?
Consider appropriations for the COVID care funding?
What, COVID care? Uh, yes, what, we did receive the full amount of one million four hundred ninety-six thousand ninety-seven dollars last week for the, the, uh, COVID care. I provided you all with a lot of the details on the restrictions of how it is to be used. It also includes that any expense the town of Dylan would have regarding COVID that, that we will have to get with him, and some of that being distributed to them as long as they can give us the invoices, because the county would be responsible for that. So far, this money cannot be used to make up for any difference or loss of revenue due to the COVID. But we did receive, it's based on our population, so we, we do need you all to appropriate that one million four hundred ninety-six thousand and ninety-seven dollars. And that would be appropriated into an account funded by itself, that we can keep up with the expenditures from.
That will go to the general fund.
And it'll go to a separate line item?
Separate line item, okay, all right.
Uh, make a motion that it go to a separate line item in the budget.
Motion made, second, that, that money goes to the second, uh, uh, in the other discussion?
And these are all reimbursements, right, Ms. Carter, or is it appropriated?
We've already received the money.
Okay.
So we just need to appropriate it.
We just have to justify how it's spent by...
Yeah, we have certain ways it can be spent. What is not spent would have free return, but it has to be spent by the end of December. And if it's not spent according to the reg, the requirements, we could have to pay it. But, um, yeah. We're very fortunate that, I believe, that we received this money, because we certainly can use it.
Call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Consider approvals for seizure, rocks, and palm, cops, and associates. They want to do that audit. You have any comment on that, Ms. Carter, or?
That's, that's just the usual agreement that we sign every year, given our authority to, to audit our books.
So, you have a motion, give them authority to audit that books?
So, Lou?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second, if we give a vote to the, the, across the socials. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Kind of a turn of nerves, a quick claim date for the road on Hotel Property.
Mr. Chairman, we're moving close to getting the property transferred to the hotel. And as so frequently happens with these, the little details that we think should have no significance all of a sudden become mountains for people looking over other people's shoulders. In examining the title and looking at the platform property to be tra, uh, transferred by, there is a road shown, leading window road going on to the property. That has been the entrance home to that property for many, many years. That road used to lead up to residents that sent back off the property, but it was subsequently, I think, burned on the fire department many, many years ago. Well, people don't quite understand, looking at it, if they don't know the history of it, that that road has no real significance other than letting you get on the property. So the title company has requested that the county produce a couple of things. One of which is some affidavits from the people who know about that road, that it's, the road serves the property, and it went to no other places, and it serves no other purpose other than to get you on the property. We have located two individuals and talked with them, and they are willing to sign the appropriate affidavits, and that's going to be accomplished on Thursday. So that'll take care of the first little thing being required by the title company. The second item that they're requiring is that the county specifically quit claim. That means release any interest we've got to that road to the purchase. And so to do that, I'm before you're asking if you would adopt a motion that would authorize either the chairman or the county administrator to sign a quit claim to be releasing any claim the county might have to that road on the property that we are conveying to the hotel. And we're not keeping anything they can have. That's the move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
All right, you got a motion, second, again, I'd say the second. Give this quick claim date to, uh, for the hotel property, is, uh, any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried, you know.
Thank you.
Stand by the, stand by the, uh, yeah, that's right. County administrator having a, they have, they have a trial session.
Um, other board members, Mr. Chairman, there was one item in here I noticed that did not make the agenda. It was, um, we made the decision to reduce the agency's funding by one percent for, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Carter, uh, is asking the board, do we wish to limit appropriations to agencies to a maximum of half the funding in the first half and the other half in the second half, meaning, you know, half till December thirty-first, and then the second half after that?
Correct, sir. The reason I put that in there, because we're continuing to watch our revenues as they come in. You already decreased entities by one percent. Let's give your way to, you come back, and I think you are, but when it come back, they want to reduce more when you can, because you give it all to them in July, and you don't have anything to go back and reduce. So I'm asking that you want to reduce that, make other provision a maximum of fifty percent for half of the year. Use more leeways if you can come to that.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion made, and y'all heard, uh, the motion, uh, Mr. Carter shared, and, uh, any other discussion?
And just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, this would not affect the schools, because they're quarterly.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay, I just...
It just gives us a chance, Jordan, to keep a tight ring on, on like spending.
You're right.
Tight ring with that.
Right.
In case we need to tighten it down.
Because you always adopt your budget contingent, contingency of local state general revenue.
Any other discussion? Mr. Carter, I do have one other question in reference to this, too. Is, with the chart that you gave us earlier, with the, uh, I'd like to see that again, first part of July. If I can, so, just to kind of keep me, you know, give them a chance to go through that mail, and I'll give us a little update on what that's on.
August, it's, it's a few more difficult in June, because we keep our books up for sixty days. So stuff becomes in July, August, also gets pulled back from June. But I'll try to kick that stuff out and be your apples to apples for practice, and I like to do what it is. Yeah, I'll be interested in where you're going to see it.
Wait, wait.
Any other discussions? Call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried. We want to have a, a closed session.
Do we have a closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive closed session. Under two point two dash thirty-three seven one one dot eight dot five, discussion concerning prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made in the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Also under two point two dash three seven one one dot eight dot twelve, information relating to the negotiation, an award of a specific contract, or competition, or bargaining is involved, and where the release of such information would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Such information shall not be withheld after the public body has made a decision to award or not to award the contract. In the case of procurement transactions conducted pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act two point two dash forty-three hundred, the provisions of this subdivision shall not apply. And any release of information relating to such transactions shall be governed by the Virginia Public Procurement Act.
Sorry. Motion made, second, we want a closed session. All, call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yeah.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right, so, we have a closed session then.
Yeah, we stay in here.